Good evening. Welcome to the Pittsford Schools Board. But of silence for Captain Terry Bremen, who was a CV-22 pilot and flight commander assigned to the 21st Special Operations Squadron, 353rd Special Operations Wing, Yokota Air Base, Japan. Captain Bremen passed away during his service to our country on November 29. He was a 2009 Pittsburgh Mendon High School graduate. Please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. Next, may I have a motion for the approval of the minutes? Renee and Kim? Thank you. Next, we will have a Board of Education. Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor? All opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you so much. Next, we will have our Board of Education reports. And with that, we've engaged in... Next, we will have the approval of the agenda. Thank you so much. Rough start tonight. Sarah and David. Thank you. All in favor? All opposed? The ayes have it. That motion carries for the agenda. And we've already approved the minutes. Next, we will go over our Monroe County School Boards Association meeting reports. You know, we've been engaged in board leadership meetings. We attended that. We've attended Executive Committee meeting, Information Exchange Committee meetings, Labor Relations. But we will hear a report from our Legislative Committee Co-Chair, Sarah Palucio.
Thank you, Robin. Yesterday, we had our Zoom advocacy day for Monroe County School Boards Association. We had a really great turnout. It was nice to see so many people. And thank you to Kim, Emily, and Robin for joining. And Mike Vesby, of course, for being the rock star of the event and really providing some great information to everyone on the call about the transition to electric buses. So that was one of our hot topics. And Mike really came in and gave some really relevant information to the challenges that we're facing moving forward with this transition. So that was great. We got a lot of good feedback from our legislators. And right now, I'm working to summarize that information and get a thank you out to them, as well as some loose ends to wrap up there. And then we will look forward to building into our legislative breakfast on February 3rd. And say the dates have already gone out, as I mentioned before. So we're really looking forward to that event at Shadow Lake this year. And just one other thing. One component of that, a new component this year, is the student voice element that we're adding in. So we have five students representing five districts across the area, two West Side, two East Side, and the Rochester City School District. And we met with the students there. Pittsburgh is included in that. So thank you to Mike and the incredible student that he was able to bring from Southern High School. I'm really impressed by what the kids have put together. And we sat down with them, and it was really incredible to see what these young people, just the knowledge and information that they were able to bring to the table. And really looking forward to having them present. They will certainly be the stars of the show there on February 3rd. And that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. So next, we have... Are there other meeting reports that anyone would like to share? Okay, hearing done, we're going to go to our dates to remember. So on the 14th of December, coming soon, we're going to have a board visit at the district office. By a show of hands, who can attend that? It's at 8:00. No tour. Okay? And of course, our schools are closed from Christmas to New Year's Day. January 4th is a board visitor tour at Mendon High School. 7:00 AM visit, 7:30 tour. And by a show of hands, who's planning to attend that? Thank you all. And our next regularly scheduled meeting is January 9, 2024. And at that time, we will have the Pittsford Pride ceremony on that day. We had to move that up because of weather. I know. That's amazing. That's amazing. So next, we'll have a financial report from Mr. Vesby.
Thank you so much. First on the agenda for your consideration is the single audit report. So we reviewed this with Audit Oversight Committee last Wednesday. And it requires approval. That's for our federal funds.
Thank you. And at this time, with our Audit Oversight Chair, would like to...
Sure. I can... Here we go. Thanks, Sarah. So last week, on December 6th, we met as the Audit Oversight Committee with Tom Zuber, who is the district's external auditor. He was there to present the extra classroom audit, which is for our student accounts. And overall, the district performed very well with minor findings in the collection and disbursement of funds. A corrective action plan for the findings has already been implemented. Mr. Vesby talked for a little while regarding that the business office provides excellent training for all of our club advisors, especially new advisors that are coming on, so they understand policy and procedure, how to work with students with collecting money, receipts, all of that. And considering what a large number of student clubs we have across the district from elementary, middle, and the high school, our district overall is performing very, very well. Mr. Zuber also presented a single audit report that is required for federal funds with no findings, which Mr. Vesby was about to talk about. And both the approval of both audits and the corrective action plan are on the agenda for tonight's... For your approval for tonight. Additionally, Kathy Barrett, the district's internal auditor, presented the internal audit report on pay and benefit rate coordination. There was a recommendation to improve the system of checks and balances when entering data. Most of it is done manually. It will be beneficial to the district to continue to explore ways to increase the automation of employee benefit selection and the corresponding costs. And again, in the internal audit report, it's on our agenda tonight for your approval, and the corrective action plan is embedded in the report as well. The committee also discussed and proposed the tax tertiary settlement, but not all of the information, Dave, not all of the information regarding the actual settlement was available at that time. So the actual settlement and refund estimate will be available at a future Board of Ed meeting. So we will come back to that. Lastly, we discussed the status of senior exemptions. We reviewed it. And currently, there are no changes being proposed by the towns, which means there are no changes by the school district at this time. And if any of you have any questions about what you saw within the packet, I am going to direct you to Mike Vesby. And our next meeting will not be until May 29. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Renee, for that report. And so we have action items related to the report. First, a single audit report. Is there a motion to accept the single audit report?
It's removed.
Second?
So that was Jeff and Renee. All in favor? All opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries.
Okay, next, for your consideration is the approval of the extra classroom activity audit report, and then the corrective action response. The single audit was embedded. This one is separate. So that's... We note that separately, because then when we submit it in the portal, they'll look for that, so we don't have to bring it back to the board at a later date with the actual approval of the corrective action.
Okay, so we will... May we have a motion to accept the extra classroom activity audit report and corrective action response? That would be Kim and David? All in favor? The ayes have it. That motion carries.
Okay. And finally, for your consideration, the acceptance of the internal audit report. Again, by approving it, as noted previously in the report, the corrective action is included in that internal audit report as well.
Is there a motion to approve the internal audit report? Sarah and Renee? All in favor? All opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, next, the bid awards will be covered on the consent agenda. And if we're ready, we can move into discussion. I will just mention that for... Not for reporting purposes, but Jeff Beardsley, who is here tonight, provides the board with an update of summer work, which will coincide with some of the discussion tonight. And then a utility status report. The only thing I'll say in terms of your review of that is, I think our conversation was wow in terms of, we're doing very well on utilization, but the... You know, obviously, there was a spike in energy costs last year. So I'll bring that up again during the budget discussion. But those are two really thorough reports for your review, information only. So when you have a chance to take a look at it, and again, it'll be part of our budget discussion. So thanks, Jeff, for putting that... Those very thoughtful reports together. So then with that, we have Harry Huffman to give us an update on our summer work. And then Brian Slinski will have a brief discussion about a possible energy performance contract, which is something that we discussed with the district planning team and thought would be appropriate to bring to the Board of Education. And then, you know, more to file in terms of our discussion. So a couple of brief reports, and then three and four will conclude just for information only. So thanks so much.
Thank you.
I have the wonderful holiday presentation of energy performance projects. So for those of you that don't know, an energy performance project really is... We call it a win-win. It's an agreement between an ESCO. An ESCO is required to do the funding mechanism for this. And then what we're doing is, we're basically taking energy efficiencies and then converting those into cost savings. And I'm going to show you here a little bit of how that works. The ESCO, in a sense, will cover the cost of doing some renovations within your building. I'm going to detail a few of those in the next slide. You're going to then take those cost savings. We're going to do infrastructure upgrades and improvements. And that money is going to be used to handle operation offsets, okay? So I'm going to slow down here. You have a BCS. That BCS has a ton of items. We can't get to all of those items to the tune of $300-plus million. How do we look at getting some of these other things done? And energy performance is one of the ways to do that. And so we focus on energy hogs, as we call them. The lights in this building, right here, use more energy than the lights that we have today. So I think we're all looking at things in our own homes, how to reduce our consumption. That would be one. Heating and air conditioning systems, pump systems, motors. We have more energy-efficient means to do the same function that you do today. Roofs. Roofs are another way we can add insulation, therefore keep the heat in. We can seal up perimeter gaps, and we save money. Windows, thermal brakes, et cetera. The other piece on an energy performance, we can start looking at means of adding solar panels. Potential windmill or energy storage is part of another offset or another means to either generate or store energy. And we do that on an offset means of buying that energy cheaper at a lower rate in time at night, and then using that energy and expending it later. How does this generally work? How do you get energy savings? We take your original consumption. So let's say here, we turn the lights on, and a given day, we spend X amount. We then update those lights, and it costs us that much less. When we take that across the board, this could be hundreds of thousands of dollars in any given year, okay? It's a massive savings. We then take that, and we multiply that by your utility rate or your consumption, and we generate dollar savings. Within those dollar savings, the ESCO is going to give you a guarantee, and this is one of the beauties of an energy performance is, they're going to do this assessment, they're going to guarantee you an amount of savings. Anything above that is even more money earned, okay? So no matter what, even if it didn't work to their calculations, they made the investment, they put up the upfront cash, you are still going to receive that payment once you make this agreement. If you save more, you get a little more. If you don't save as much, they still have to pay that out, okay? And this is an offset to your operational budget. So the benefits of using an energy performance contract in lieu of capital projects that you see and Gary will report on is, there is no public vote. Why? It's an operational cost line item. It's a reduction and a savings, and therefore, you're not asking for any more funds from the public to do so. There's no out-of-pocket, because the ESCO is actually going to pay within that value the upfront cost to change these lights, both the labor and the material costs. Therefore, it doesn't have an impact on your tax levy. You get the guaranteed savings, and there's no Wicks Law bidding and all of those kinds of things, although they do have the follow-up prevailing wage laws. So we make sure they fall within all the restrictions. What do you get? In most cases, healthier buildings. We're upgrading mechanical systems and that, filtrations, all of those. You save energy, and you're cutting operational costs. So as you can see across the board, it's fairly a win-win. There's a huge, long process, and I am not going to go through this slide in detail. It's shared to you. You can see it. And I think the summary for me in any of this is that this is another mechanism to upgrade facilities. And you have a lot of lighting and pump systems within your facilities that, in light of hearing some of this stuff that you're seeing in raising energy costs, this is a way to shield yourself against that and reduce your energy consumption and not having to go through a vote. So that's the general gist of an energy performance contract. It's quick. It's down and dirty. Any questions?
Brian, can you just share? There is one caveat, that if the board wanted to have the option of putting it up to vote...
Yes.
Then there is an additional savings there that the board would have to decide which approach to take.
Correct, yes. I should have mentioned that. Thank you. The... I'll give you a couple of things. This is, in a sense, a financing mechanism, right? You're borrowing money by using an agency to do this for you. They are going to go through the state. You are going to get aid on this. If you decide that you want to put this on the vote, you can actually get an extra 10%. So what most people don't realize, within your aid formulas, is a baseline, and then there was an incentive 10% aid. The state said ESCOs can go through the baseline. If you vote and you get a positive vote, you get an extra 10%. Again, you're still at no cost, but if you get an extra 10%, that means we can give this many more items within the gamut of the scope of work. I will tell you that, in most cases, just to be upfront, when you do this, yeah, you're going to spend a little more over the... You know, financing this through an agency, but in the long run, your energy savings should be so much greater and offset that cost versus if you did this as a capital project. So if you did it as a capital and you voted it, and the voters voted it, you don't have to pay for those... Much more of those financing costs. You'll save a little bit. I'm still a fan.
So one of the things we'll just have to consider, the board will have to consider, is the timeliness of it, whether or not you want it as a referendum or additional piece to vote on at the budget vote. And it's hard to make, I think, those decisions in isolation. I think we'll also need to see what else is going to be on the budget slate for people to vote on. Sometimes, when you put more than a couple or three, it can be confusing, even though you say no tax impact. But those are things that we can take the board through in the future.
Yeah, we have yet to define this project, so... But you do have many things in the building condition survey that fit the gamut of an energy performance.
The other aspect is the timing, based on the submission of the current capital project and the coordination of that work. So it's an ideal time to consider this work. So we could, in essence, pull out some of the lighting work and some of that work, you know, that's already in the project and include it in the scope of work. So it buys some capacity within the existing project to do additional work that's within the scope of the project. And depending on our bidding situation and what comes back, you know, we... That might be a positive avenue for us to pursue. So the timing is right in terms of the discussion, as well as the operational savings that we would get in an environment where, again, previously mentioned, that we've got an increase in electric costs.
Yeah, we're also seeing a lot of grant funding mechanisms right now, and so they come on and off constantly. But sometimes, we can bring those in fold, too, and you get a little bit more money for your... You know, it's better.
I think there's a good track or two of when a district puts out, you know, that the public supports the extra 10% and understands the message.
You have done one in the past, if you don't know. Scary to say, I was involved in it. Way back when, we did a lot of windows throughout the district and upgrades to some mechanical systems. I remember staying there doing Thornell Road and Jeff...
A million dollars.
Yeah, it was a big... So you have done this in the past.
I'm going to ask my question, then. Given all of that, is there... With the timing of the capital project and the work that we're lining up and the approval times and all of this, is there a benefit to getting this... Getting ahead of this and not waiting until May? If we were to go that route and include it as a referendum? Or is there a possibility of approving this sooner and getting started to work with the capital project, I guess?
So that's why... That was the reason for bringing it tonight and kind of setting the timeline that we had. And the good news is, we can get a lot of that work planned and prepped in advance, and then the vote itself is more about the extra 10%. So I don't think it would hold us up, per se, and I think the timing is right. So... And I don't want to steal the thunder in terms of where we are in design, but they're ready to submit the projects in that March-April timeframe. So it would align.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
My turn.
So I'm just going to go through briefly what we did. We're coming up with the... So the 69... Order referent, approved March 28, 2023, the 69 million dollar capital project we're just referencing. The schedule that Mike was just referencing, too, is the pre-construction and design phase that we are in and currently working on. SED review is coming up. We're anticipating Phase 2 to... In September of '24, the plan construction is really going to happen next summer. We're going to take advantage of that first summer for what we often do is the demolition-type work, the dirty, noisy stuff, so we can do the cleaner, nicer construction work going into the academic year. Project closeout is early '28. Given the magnitude of this project, it can't be done in two or three summers. It's actually going to take over the calendar years, starting beginning of summer. We are winding down the $6.8 million capital project. If we recall that one, that is complete and in the final punch list phase. There's a whole laundry list of things that were accomplished on the left. I'm not going to go through them all. But it was completed on time and was under budget when we wrapped that up. So we're in the closeout phase of that, closing down the contracts, so that Mike can get his final cost reports filed.
Really? That's... Didn't want to be disrespectful of time. Any questions?
So Gary, what can we anticipate, do you feel, for the summer?
I'm going to let Nick take that one for the summer work.
So this upcoming summer, that new project, the 69.8 million, is split into two phases. There's a Phase 1 and a Phase 2. This upcoming summer, we are planning on doing the Phase 1 portion, which is primarily focused on your secure vestibules at all of your schools. Student safety... Upgrading your safety at your schools has been a massive priority for you, and that's what we pushed during the referendum. And so SEI and campus work together with the district to put that as the first piece that we're going to tackle. We have already gotten SED approval, and we are planning to go out to bid with that work on January 3rd, with a bid opening planned for the end of January, I believe. We have January 31st as our bid date. So if we can do that, we'll get everything going. There is a lead time on ordering the materials, which is why we would be starting. Our plan is to start mid-June. We've been working with Scott Parker and school principals to try to come up with a timeline that works best. But to answer your question, Mike, secure vestibules is primarily what we are focusing on for that summer. We will also be working on any of the pool upgrades at Mendon High School that we had talked about. So the timing systems, the video boards, that kind of stuff, that is also built into the Phase 1 portion of the project. Everything else is part of Phase 2, and that will be going into SED for review. The plan is for that in early March. And we anticipate around this time next year, or hopefully a little earlier, that we will be bidding that work as well as we get started as soon as possible in 2025.
And just want to say thank you...
Thank you. For the work, the collaborative work you've been doing with our district and our buildings and our principals and other stakeholders, especially as it relates to the safety portion of this. And I know I've been privy and part of several of the meetings with principals. And then not only have you sat in and talked to the principals about the design, you've gone there and allowed them to conceptualize what that would look like. So hats off to all of you for that collaborative work. Thank you.
Just one of the things, make no mistake, we are facing headwinds when it comes to labor and material shortages. It started in COVID, and it hasn't gone away.
You should have ended before.
Set the expectations low, and then we'll exceed them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. I appreciate it. Thanks for all your help.
Next, we'll move to our human resources report. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, and good evening. First for your consideration is the professional staff report. We have change in status from probationary to tenure for two certificated staff members. We have three school-related professional appointments, three school-related professional resignations, one school-related professional termination. We have revised winter coaching salaries for your approval, as well as a fall 2024 coaching salary for your review.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept the professional staff report? Emily and Renee? All in favor? All opposed? The report is accepted. Thank you.
Thank you. Next for your consideration is the support staff report. We have two clerical appointments, three transportation appointments, one transportation termination, and one custodial appointment.
Is there a motion to accept our support staff report? Sarah? And David? Thank you. All in favor? All opposed? That report is accepted. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have first tenure readings for your review as well.
Thank you. Next, we have our curriculum report. Ms. Ward?
Good evening. I'm really pleased to have Heather Clayton, Principal of Mendon Center, here to take us through the first portion of my part of the agenda. I want to give you just a little bit of a backdrop before she gets started walking you through the work that her committee did over a year and a half of very highly collaborative work and study. This originated out of the summer leadership work that was done in the summer of 2021, where as a group of about 80 district leaders, Board of Education members, PTSA, we gathered for two days to really unpack our, what was at the time, new equity policy that the district had adopted, the board had adopted in April of that year. We spent some time together looking at a number of data sets as we thought about actionable goals to help us come close to meeting the vision laid out in our equity policy. One of the areas that surfaced through those conversations was the area of math, as we looked at things like student performance on math and subgroups of students gaining access or appearing to not gain equitable access to higher levels of math instruction as they move through the high school. And we know that structurally, the path for students gaining access to high levels of math instruction by their senior year in high school actually starts as early as third or fourth grade at the elementary level, as we think about how we... as third or fourth grade at the elementary level, as we think about how we, um, look at grouping in certain, um, instances. Um, and so out of the work that summer, um, we agreed that we needed a committee to really study our practices and think about, um, what, if anything differently, we needed to do relative to our math instructional practices in order to make sure that students had equitable access and felt, um, confident about themselves as math learners. So Heather was tapped to lead the work of that committee and she did a stellar job. And so I'm really going to turn the rest of this right over to her to walk you through the work that the committee did and the recommendations that they arrived at. So Heather?
Thank you. Um, I want to start by thanking Jeff's office, the data team, for, like, a lot of data that really informed the steps we took as a committee and they really helped us with a lot of the pieces you'll hear along the way. Thank you to the curriculum office for some of the resources and materials that we looked at and just the support of everyone. Um, it was a 19-person committee and we had stakeholder groups from elementary and middle school. We had district office representation. We had parent representation. We had parent professionals. So it was a really robust group with a lot of different stakeholders, um, involved. And before we get to the recommendations, I want to kind of tell the story of our committee work because we really evolved over time, um, when we looked at this. So this was our initial committee charge and, um, our instructional leadership council, District Committee K-12, took a look at this charge and identified the roles that they wanted represented on the committee. So that's how that membership was chosen. And we really had to recommend if there were any necessary changes to our fourth through sixth grade math grouping practices to ensure the equitable and flexible access to higher level math, as Melanie shared. So the very first thing we did was we took a look at, like, our current state in Pittsburgh and a bunch of, um, baseline data. So we wanted to see exactly how many kids were enrolled in each of the options at sixth grade. So just to kind of, um, give you the backdrop for that, in sixth grade for math, we had kids in everything from special class math, sixth grade, all the way up to geometry. So, um, the bulk of our kids were in regular math six or in six honors. And then we had children in special class. We had children in what is the double accelerated program known as pre-algebra. Um, and then we had some students taking geometry as sixth graders as well. So we looked at how many kids were in each of those course settings across five years. Um, and in addition to those enrollment numbers, we took a close look at the course descriptions in grade six for math. The course descriptions were first, or were most recently updated in 2016. And it was really interesting as we looked at those course descriptions because it really didn't describe different mathematics happening in each of the courses. It shared things like, um, if students were extremely capable or if they had maturity and study skills homework completion, if they had motivation, if they maintained a certain grade point average. So we quickly revealed that those course descriptions really didn't lend themselves to the mathematics of the conversation. It was more about, um, just work ethic study skills. So we were unveiling a lot of things even with our first look at the data. We also looked at the grouping practices across the elementary buildings and realized that every building is doing something different. We had everything from no mixing of kids at all for math instruction to regrouping kids across an entire grade level, to teachers departmentalizing where one might teach social studies, one might teach math, and they, you know, had a regrouped and departmentalized or just departmentalized without regrouping. So there were all these different permutations of how the grouping was happening. So this is how we got started. We realized we had a lot to do. Then, um, we went deeper into the data and we looked at the grade six math placements, but we also looked at which elementary school was the feeder for each of these placements. And we also looked at the number of kids that were maybe moving out of tracks. So for example, if they went into grade six math, we wanted to know how many of those went to seven honors? Or if they went into six honors math, how many of them went back to just math seven and not seven honors? We wanted to kind of get a sense of the fluidity amongst the track as well. So we took a real dive into that. We looked at five years, um, of data. We looked at the feeder schools. We looked at the differences between the middle schools as well. There were definitely differences in terms of number of students in honors versus regular math. But a big aha for us was in each middle school out of a possible around 200 to 240, it ranges depending on the year, you would only have between zero and eight kids out of that entire cohort making any movement within the track that they were assigned to as a sixth grader. So that was really eye-opening in terms of, like, what's happening that we're locking kids into a path that they're unable to then move from? And what is it we're valuing about their mathematical knowledge? What's our goal in all of this and how are we going to help ensure that all of our kids have access? So, um, then we really got into the research part of it. So we knew what our current state was. We knew what we had to do, but then we wanted to know what the experts were telling us. So the National Council of Teachers for Mathematics developed this series called Catalyzing Change, and it really looks at, um, how do we ensure this equitable access for kids across all grades? And it started with high school and how we're preparing kids with our mathematics instruction for their personal and professional, real-world experiences. Then they quickly learned it had implications from middle school all the way down to elementary school. Um, in your packet is the key recommendations that came out of all of those studies, but these were very dense studies with a lot of professional resources and very well-vetted and, again, from NCTM. We know it's a high-quality, um, organization. Their four key findings, the second of those findings was to create equitable structures in math, and that's really what our group was diving into. A couple of their recommendations really deal with the, so what piece, once you have the structures, what does the instruction look like? So that's kind of feeding into our next steps of the work. But our charge was just look at our current structures and make recommendations for changes. So we had our current state with the data. We had what the research and the experts were telling us. And then we took a breath and we said, let's, like, juxtapose what we believe against what we're really doing. So we took the areas of, um, curriculum and resources, um, materials, intervention, assessment, and professional learning. And for each of those categories, we had our belief statement and they ranked, the committee ranked how they believed in it from a scale of zero to 100, with 100 being the strongest belief. And then matching that belief was a practice that would reinforce that belief and they put up their sticky to kind of show where they were in terms of percentages with that. So I just took, like, a quick photo of a couple of the charts to show you that we definitely had discrepancies between what we believed and what our practices were. So our data was telling us that, this exercise was telling us that, the research was telling us that. So what do we do about all of that? Um, we developed an anchor question to kind of guide us through the second phase of our work. And this was so important to us because all of our kids are capable of higher-level math work. And, um, it, math ability is not innate. It's not fixed. It can develop at any time. And it's so unfortunate, we hear kids as young as first or second grade saying, I'm not good at math. And that's not okay because anybody can be good at math. And we know that amongst all of our kids, there'll be kids that are fast processors and slower processors, but that's not the distinction between being a good math student or a not a good math student. And there's a lot of onus and value put on calculation, which is really kind of missing the mark in terms of our next generation skills because a lot of our calculation is being done automated now. And our kids have to be thinkers to be able to make connections and see the patterns and intricacies with math, um, beyond just the calculation. So this was really important because we wanted to really take a look at what are we doing and what is it doing to our kids in terms of their identity in mathematics, their confidence as math learners, and their motivation towards the math? So then we decided we wanted to hear from our kids. So we, um, a subgroup of us created a survey. It was approximately 12 questions. We received 1,786 responses from our kids. We surveyed all kids, fourth grade through eighth grade. And we wanted to know how they felt about themselves as math learners, what they understood about math ability, how they felt about their motivation for math class, once they were in class, how they were feeling. We wanted their feedback around the pacing of their math class, and then we had, like, a narrative open response. These responses were so fascinating from the kids. I mean, we took a couple of meetings and we really, like, we read every single comment by our kids. And they are really in tuned to where they are in their mathematical understanding, um, perceptions around math, their feelings around math. So just a couple of highlights I wanted to point out to you. Our kids, um, scored very high, saying that math ability is something about a person that can change over time. Our elementary kids, 96% of them agreed with that and 95% of the middle school kids agreed with that. So that was outstanding. We know that they realize that ability can change. Um, when we asked if they thought they were good at math, 92% of our elementary kids said they think they're good at math, either agree or strongly agree. So we were really happy about that. Little bit of a dip at middle school, 86% of our kids said they thought they were good at math. What was really interesting is we had, um, the statement, I look forward to math class every day. Only 72% of our elementary kids said they look forward to ma- math class every day. And only 66% of our middle school kids said they looked forward to math class every day. So that was a little disheartening, but then we had also asked the question, I feel comfortable making contributions in my math class. That spiked back up, which was really affirming around all the work we've been doing about, um, inclusive environments and comfortableness in class and discussion strategies because we had 90% of our elementary kids said they were comfortable participating in math class and 88% of the middle school kids were comfortable participating. So it was just getting them to the class that was less motivating, but once they were there, they were doing okay. As far as pacing, around 65% felt the pace was just right, but we did have around 25% of the kids say it was too slow. So we knew whatever we were recommending, we had to, like, accelerate the pace for some of our students to keep it engaging and motivating. We have to hit just that right sweet spot where they have productive struggle, but they're not frustrated to the point of tears. So, again, we considered all the things that our kids told us, all the things the research told us, all the things our data told us, and I promise we're getting to the recommendations. But a couple of other things about our kids. Our students hold some really widespread misconceptions about math. They see it as a set of rules and procedures. Um, being good at math means you're fast at math. Math is about certainty and right or wrong answers. It's all about the numbers. And our kids really believe that from all of their narrative comments. There was a lot, a lot of comments that tied back to that. So our committee really felt as a next step, we have to do a lot of work in terms of mindset, growth mindset around mathematics and, um, teaching our kids to see that it's much more than that. Elementary felt that, um, if other people tell them they're good at math, then they're good at math. And they liked being in class with their friends. That was really important, more important than anything with the math. It was, can I be with my friends? Um, the middle schoolers commented that six and six honors were basically the same. They didn't know how they got there. Um, some of them felt their fifth grade teacher was mad at them and that's how they were placed, where they were placed. Some of the kids said, well, I'm not that smart. I don't even know why I'm in this class. Um, it was just really, really interesting to see what our kids were saying. So our key findings, we knew we needed consistency with our grouping practices at the elementary level. We know we need greater transparency and clarity around our process for placing students into grade six. And we also know we need improved differentiation between math six and six honors. So knowing all of that, before we made our recommendations, we had our ideas, but then we put them up against the implications in all these different categories. So we said, if we do this, then what's the implication in curriculum assessment, resources, scheduling, staffing, student placement, professional development, communication? We really had to, like, peel away the layers of all of those categories to make sure we're making really well-informed decisions about what we were recommending. So key points of our recommendations, at fourth and fifth grade, we have, we had some buildings really doing more of that, like, regrouping across grade levels or regrouping across teachers and using that ability mindset with, it was the slower-paced group or it's the lower math group or the high math and really seeing an urgency to kind of disband that language, that, that ability level mindset is fixed and innate and that's not what math is about. So we really have to put a stop to that kind of thinking about our children, especially at the elementary level. And what's really important at elementary is keeping the groups flexible and focused on the information about the student's understanding of specific topics and not their overall ability. It's not about what they did on a pre-assessment in September and that determines where they are for the year. It's being responsive in every unit of study. Where are the kids and how are we going to respond to what they need? Frequent progress monitoring and professional development and instructional resources. Just as an aside, the teachers at Menon Center in fourth grade were, we were like the last holdout that was regrouping across the grade level. And the fourth grade teachers this year, we met over the summer and they knew that this would be coming and they said, let's do it this year. Let's, like, be the guinea pigs, do the action research. We're going to start it this year. And we're creating an FAQ document that can then be shared with the other elementary buildings as we live it this year. We have learned so much so far. Um, and fifth grade is also doing a lot of this, like, looking at data unit by unit. So after every unit of study, teachers are collectively looking at the data and then making decisions about how the children are doing. They're pre-assessing the next unit and then they're regrouping and shuffling the kids around for the next unit. So teachers are almost working on math teams and kids are fluently moving between the teachers on that team for their math instruction, depending on what they need in that particular unit of study. When it came to doing the grading, the teachers graded together. So it's that whole PLC model where you have collective responsibility for all of the kids. That math team has collective responsibility for all of the kids. So every teacher knows how all 50 of those kids are doing or all 75 of those kids are doing on that team. And, um, the pacing has improved at elementary. The students who may have needed a little more time around the mathematics are moving at a quicker pace because we're all in sync with our pacing now. There isn't, like, a certain group that works at a slower pace all year long. So the pacing is tighter, the pacing is quicker, the kids are rising to the occasion of the higher expectations. The use of tasks that are like that low floor, high ceiling where it's, um, really great opportunities to think and use higher-level math, but there's also an entry point into the work for all of the kids has been powerful. Um, we've created big whiteboard vertical workspaces for the kids to work on in their math classes. It's just been like a really exciting study. So when I do my board report in the spring, I'll be happy to share more with you, but we know this is working. So that's a good testimonial for you. Um, and that, those recommendations for fourth and fifth grade are starting in the fall of 2024. Middle school, our recommendations are for the fall of 2025. And what we talked about at sixth grade was, um, the need for, what we need is sustained action and ongoing learning as we work through our recommendations. We need clearly defined and differentiated curriculum resources and expectations for math six and six H. If we say they're different courses, they have to be different courses. The, the descriptions and the course differences can't be about things like executive functioning and study skills because that's not differentiating the math instruction. Um, we need to have frequent progress monitoring and a transparent process about how get, kids get into the class that they're in, but also how they can move between, um, tracks. Like, I don't think our families really understand how the kids get into the sixth grade math that they're in. And once they're in it, I don't know that they know how to make the change. We say that it's flexible and fluid, but it, our data's telling us it's not. So how can we work through that piece? So how can we work through that piece with a lot of communication around the math programming and placement, a lot of professional development and instructional resources? So we did talk about, you know, what would it look like if math was just a grade six math or math was just a grade seven math? And what we realized with a start point of fall 2025, there is not the time to have the professional learning to do that right. So the starting place is to maintain the courses we have, but really work on that differentiation piece, really work on the transparency around process and placement and really work with our kids around mathematical mindset and the task, the rich tasks we're using in class, the use of inquiry. And, I mean, I have a hunch as we go through that process that it might become glaringly obvious that, you know what? The courses aren't that different. We need to consider if we have one course or not. But we just weren't at a place in our study that we could make that recommendation. So this is where we landed. And just our goal in all of this is to grow confident math learners. Everyone's a math person, everyone's on a math journey. Mistakes make us smarter. And we want our kids to know and value that productive struggle and learn to love math. So just a brief synopsis of what we were doing for a year and a half. The group was fantastic and it was a lot of learning and a lot of honesty around the table because there were really deep-held beliefs on both sides of the continuum. Rip off the Band-Aid, go all math six. Never, 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 we're never going to do that. You know, rip off the Band-Aid, all flexible grouping at elementary. What will that look like? We've never done it before. So it was just a really great conversation. Having parent perspective that was there was really important too, about saying, "I have no idea how my child got into this math or what it means." So we uncovered a lot of things that are going to be stronger and better because of the hard work of the group.
Thank you, Heather. We appreciate all of the work from the committee and that student voice.
Oh, my gosh. If you're ever interested, there's just binders and binders of, but our kids are so insightful.
Thank you.
Sure.
Would this then impact the 7th grade math and seven honors? Would you be looking then to change the course description for those?
Nothing is changing. So in 2025, it's still six, six honors, seven, seven honors. Nothing is changing at this time, other than the things that I shared with you. Years down the road, if it lends itself to that, you'd have to look at seven along with six to have those conversations. So a lot of districts have done away with six and six honors and they have just math six and a lot of them just have math seven and they don't make those distinctions around the course trajectories until 8th grade. It's unusual that we do it as early as we do.
I think it's important for the board to wrap their heads around, even though our structures are K5, 6, 8, our 6th graders are still considered elementary learners in the eyes of state ed. So K6 is elementary school. So I think a big part of the thinking and the struggle was that we, even though we have 6th graders in this building, they're still babies. They're not as big as they like to think they are either. So the work has been phenomenal. I love where you landed. Makes a ton of sense. And I really appreciate the look at 6th grade in particular because we are unique. And I also appreciate the discovery of six versus six H and what distinguishes the two and what we do about that. So thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I had a quick question just on, do you plan to now monitor, even though these are subtle changes, are we going to start to look to see like, what are those survey results on a go-forward basis? Or like, is there more fluidity between math classes now in the future?
Oh, I think we have an obligation to do that based on the recommendations. It's really interesting because in closely monitoring it right now at elementary, it's fascinating what we're finding and the feedback from teachers has been so overwhelmingly positive. So we'll, so our charge was to make these recommendations and we kept joking like, well, I wonder who's going to be on the next committee because that's the lift around like the instructional practices, changing the course descriptions, making sure there's a professional development, materials, resources, all of that now has to be done. So now we shift our eye towards that. So once we've shared with all of you and you understand the recommendations, then the work is going to begin.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Thanks to all of your committee for the amazing work. I know it was hours and hours of sometimes very challenging conversations. So thank you for leading that work. Thanks. Next, I'm very pleased to present Nicole Berry, who is our Secondary Social Studies Standards Leader. And she is here to share with the board very briefly a couple of new course proposals. And you have lots of information in your packet that we're not necessarily asking you to look at tonight. Nicole's going to give you an overview sort of what this is about and how this came about. And then you will have between now and the next board meeting to take a look and let me know if there's any questions and we'll ask for action on the recommendations at that point. So Nicole.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. So in our discussions in the Social Studies Department, we had started to realize that our Vietnam elective was a little outdated, didn't feel quite as relevant to the students. And so we started a conversation about shifting that and, you know, moving away from the Vietnam elective and maybe doing something else. The same time, we recognized that our military history elective is very popular among the students and a lot of them are asking for more of that. And so it seemed like a really nice fit to move, to create a modern military history, move the Vietnam course, sort of that piece of it, into the modern military history. And then it would give us an opportunity to, you know, study military history up through present day. So the early military history course is sort of the current military history course. We've just cut it back. The current one now goes to World War II. So the new early military history would be Greece through Napoleon. And then the modern military history would be the Civil War through today. Again, we chose this because it is a very popular course. We have students who have actually requested to take the same course twice, multiple students who have asked to do that. It is a very hands-on course. There's a lot of simulations in the course. We've actually had students, there's a quote I have from one student that I love, "Learning, we're learning, but we don't know we're learning." So that's one of, you know, as a teacher, that's like high praise. And so that's, you know, why, again, we chose to really go with this military history, a second military history. And a lot of our Regents courses, our students asked to go into more detail and more depth around wars and we just don't have time to go into the depth that they'd like us to. So again, this gives us the opportunity to do that. And the students are very curious about current events and they're asking, you know, what's going on in Ukraine? Can we talk about that? And there's not always a great space to spend a lot of time doing that. This modern military history course would allow us to do that and to really, because it's an elective, it can be driven by the students. You know, their voice can kind of decide where you go. It does connect to our global history, US history and government standards very nicely. We really like the connection there with our, I mean, I think with global and US, you can kind of guess all the connections because it's history and you're talking about these battles. With our government standards, it's a nice connection with civic responsibility. Our military is run by the citizens. That's how it's supposed to be. So giving the students more education around the military, I think is very beneficial to them going forward as they become adults and are voting. Students, we have students that are going into the military. We have, you know, our students have to sign up for selective service. So, you know, for that reason, it also felt like a really nice place for us to go, to move forward and to really be responsive to the students' needs. So yeah, I think that's all I've got.
Just add a couple of quick details to Nicole's overview. The elective courses are semester-long courses. The plan, if approved, if these courses are approved, is that one year we would offer only early military history and it would run likely both semesters at both high schools. The following year, we would offer at both high schools the modern military history. So kid, this is, these are both electives open to students, grades nine through 12. So the students would have two opportunities in their high school career to take either one of the courses. And early military history is not a prerequisite to modern. So kids can choose one or the other or both. So just thinking structurally how it fits into our current program of studies, that's the plan of record at this point.
Yes, and they don't have to take them in that order either.
Right, right.
However they want to take it, it's fine. Won't make any difference.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem. Thank you.
All of the CSE recommendations are on the consent agenda?
Thank you. Next, we'll have our superintendent's report.
Thank you. There is not a need for an executive session this evening. You will have shortly a request for approval of three field trips for different spring sports teams going to Orlando and Myrtle Beach. When they were first sent to me, I rejected them. Then I met with the athletic director to review protocols around the cost of the trips, how students that may, and families that maybe couldn't afford the trips would then be able to afford them without feeling bad about the trip or the cost or how they would go about working out finances. And then I also wanted to get a sense from the families and from the boosters that there was 100% support relative to doing these as it relates to playing time, spending money, et cetera. So my understanding, after I approved these, was that all students on all of these trips will have playing time and that boosters do have a mechanism to support students that can't afford the trip. And then the other aspect of that is the transportation piece in itself. And the most difficult, each had their own nuances, but the Orlando's a little bit further than Myrtle Beach and so that's going to be a little bit more costly because the majority of families will be driving their kids. But in all of these trips, parents do have the right to decide how they're actually going to get there. And from my understanding, they are going to be more family vacation-type trips mixed in with both league play and non-league play, games and scrimmages so that all kids can participate. So for your first consideration is field trip approval to Orlando, Florida. That's Menden High School softball.
Is there a motion to accept that field trip? Jeff and Emily, all in favor? All opposed? The ayes have it.
For your second consideration is a field trip approval to Myrtle Beach and that is for Menden High School baseball.
Motion to approve the Myrtle Beach, Menden High School baseball field trip. So that is David and Emily, all in favor? All opposed? Ayes have it.
And then last is a field trip approval for Myrtle Beach for Sutherland High School baseball.
Is there a motion to accept the field trip? Sarah and Renee, all in favor? All opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you. Any questions on the consent agenda? We have two policies for approvals that were brought last board meeting, one on remote learning and the second one on pediculosis. Head lice. Oh, remote working, please. Yes, thank you. I was struggling with thinking about the head lice one. Any questions? Okay, along those lines, originally, we had planned for the board to receive tonight information on an Erie One audit that we've been undergoing relative to policies. And through that audit, Erie One has looked at all of our policies. They've made recommendations to the policies, some substantial and some really just semantics. But there's so many of them, I didn't want to put them in the packet and ask you to review them in short order. So at our next, between now and our next board meeting, we will put together a packet of the changes that Erie One is recommending for all of our policies for you to review. And then we'll ask for a first reading and then approval like we normally would, but there will be a lot. So it was a full policy audit that all of our departments went through. The one most relevant, I think, for us, just to discuss briefly, is the one around public comment. So Erie One did come back with recommendations to our public comment procedures policy. And the most major change in that really is the notion that the community can speak publicly only on matters that adhere to the agenda. And so that means we post our agenda online and all public comments would need to be in accordance to relevance specific to agenda items. So that is a change that I want to bring to your attention there. Erie One also put some other language in around public comments relative to the behavior of those speaking publicly. So when I do send these, please pay close attention to that because I'll be asking for full approval of all of the policies. And I'd like to make sure that your eyes are on that policy in particular. Any questions? Okay. I do want to share some good news that I received just today. And this came from the RPO and it says that this is the first time ever we have had nearly a third of the entire RYO be made up of Sutherland and Menden students. So that's pretty amazing. So 30-something percent of all students that are on RPO are Menden and Sutherland combined. We have over 12, oh, we have 12. We have 12 students that will be participating there. So I thought that was pretty cool. We'll also mention specific student names, I believe, in an upcoming news article. And then last, I have a conversation I'd like to have with the board around succession planning. And it's, with a heavy heart, I share some of these things. So several months ago, I met with Assistant Superintendent Melanie Ward when she informed me that this would be her last year as ASI. And then shortly after, I heard from Mike Biondi that this would be his last year as principal at Allen Creek. And then next, I heard from Julie Barker, who informed me this would be her last year as teacher center director. So I started to sweat quite a bit because these are three very significant positions and most importantly, they're three of the most remarkable educators that I've had the pleasure of working with. To their credit, they wanted me to know about their retirements early on so we can think through the ramifications of what their absence would mean and specifically allow us time to post their respective positions in a timely manner, especially given the local competition for highly qualified educators. So with that said, I went back to Melanie and I asked her if she would be able to stay on with the district for a portion of the following fall to assist with the transition of a new ASI. It's a big role. At the same time, assist with summer professional development as well as with mentoring four elementary school principals that have two or less years' experience at Pittsburgh. So of note, this year is the second year for our Thornell Road principal. It's our first year with our new Pittsburgh principals at Jeff Road and Park Road. And next year would be another new principal at Allen Creek. So four of our five elementary principals would be in their second or zero years in Pittsburgh. So at first, I'd just like a thumbs up from the board to see if you're okay if we can begin to post the ASI position with the acknowledgement that we would also be coming back to you to create a new position title for Melanie so she can stay on through the end of November to assist with all these transitions. I anticipate bringing you a new job title and job description for Melanie in April that would also have a retirement date on it of December 1st, 2024. And then that position would be abolished effective December 2nd. So if I can get just a thumbs up that I'm going down the right path? Okay, and regarding further specific timelines, I'm recommending posting Melanie's position this week with those thumbs up and bringing the successful candidate for your consideration to our February 6th board meeting. On February 7th, I would like to post the Allen Creek principal position and recommend the successful candidate the successful candidate to the board no later than our April meeting. And during the time between these processes, I will be working with PDTA and the HR office to expedite a posting and hiring for a new Teacher Center Director. Is everyone with me so far? Okay, and then the last, specific to Mike Biondi, his retirement date is October 3rd, which allow us the summer and first month of the school year to utilize his administrative assistance, which also would include supporting at least four principals with two years or less experience. It's my opinion that we should have a new principal in place for the start of the summer at Allen Creek instead of trying to hire for October, if that makes sense. Okay. So, we don't need action from the board on any of these things tonight, other than you're feeling good as far as the process moving forward around posting for the ASI position, then posting for the Allen Creek position, creating a new position title for Melanie starting at the end of the year to carry us through November, which will be a heavy lift, but very much appreciated by the district. So, we're all good?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Superintendent Piro. So, next, for the consent agenda, we need board action. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda? Emily and Renee, so all in favor? All opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you so much. Is there any old business at this time? Some comments from the board?
Yes, so, as part of the Community Engagement Committee, I just wanted to thank everyone who was able to join us for Candlelight Night. So, Superintendent Piro and most of the board members were there. It was really incredible to hear the Sutherland High School Vocal Jazz Ensemble, got us in the mood for the holidays. So, that was really great, and, you know, Superintendent Piro with the high fives for all the solo vocals was very much appreciated by the students. And just to note that we will be looking forward to supporting the Barker Road Middle School Musical Shrek this weekend at Menon High School and Rainbow Classic next week. So, some fun things.
Thank you, Barry.